Appeals meeting is called to order. I'll ask that everybody stand, face the flag, and we'll say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Baumgarten, can we do the roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Allen?
Here.
Butz?
Krug?
Here.
Gesund?
Here.
McAlpine? Euler? Evans?
Here.
Hansett?
Here.
Ward?
Here.
Mr. Chair, you have a quorum.
Okay, and a quorum is for members. In the instance that a regular member cannot attend, an alternate member can sit in their place, and they have full voting rights and all the rights as if they were a full board member. So, Mr. Hansett, thank you for showing up.
Thank you.
We do have an agenda. Quorum. Next item of business is the approval of the agenda. Does any member of staff or the board have any suggested changes to the agenda?
I'd make a motion that we approve the agenda as submitted.
Support.
We have a motion in support. Any discussion? Mr. Baumgarten.
Okay. All right. Mr. Krug?
Yes.
Ms. Gesund?
Yes.
Mr. Hansett?
Yes.
Ms. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
And Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay, our next item of business is the approval of minutes from our February 14, 2019, meeting. Do any members have any comments regarding that?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of February 14, 2019, as submitted.
Support.
We have a motion in support from Ms. Ward.
Thank you.
Any comments or discuss? I have one comment under staff comments. It says question mark.
Yeah.
Do we want to put in the record a set of minutes that has question mark? I know we have these on video, and perhaps it's possible for staff to just take a quick look at that and perhaps either bring these back at a different time, or if there's another thought different than that, I'll entertain comments from the board.
Just so you know, I'm willing to amend my motion to address the question mark and put in the proper information.
And I'm willing to address my second.
Okay, so we have a motion to amend it with the proper information. And so presuming that the expectation from the motion maker and the seconder is simply to have staff review the video and put in an accurate summary of what staff comments were, if any. Perfect. Okay, I'm hearing yes?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Any discussion from board members? Mr. Baumgarten.
Okay. All right, on the motion to approve the February 11, 2019, minutes as amended, let's see. Ms. Gesund?
Yes.
Mr. Hansett?
Yes.
Ms. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Krug?
Yes.
And Chair Evans?
Yes, and that's for the meeting of February 14. Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, 14.
Yep. Okay. So, our items for the agenda. Our first item of business is discussion, annual discussion regarding rules of procedure. As the board members may be aware, our rules of procedure, we are required by the rules to review those rules of procedure at our July meeting. And so we are here. Do any members of the board have any thoughts, any comments, suggestions? Mr. Allen?
I had a couple of suggestions under 1A, training. Just to add, with a published report distributed in December and June of each year, so that everybody can sort of keep track of their scorecard. And it keeps everybody's eye on the prize. And the next one that I had was 2A. We might want to talk about what constitutes reasonable attendance and what is not reasonable attendance and what we do in that case.
Okay.
Let's see. The other one, I think there was only one more. It was a minor one. Two, excuse me, three other meetings. It's very unlikely that this would ever happen, but if the chair or the vice chair are both absent, who then is the successor to lead the meeting?
That's the meeting, yeah.
Okay. All right.
And that was all.
All right. We've got those three. Did any? I guess one way we can do this is if any other members have any thoughts not related to these three items, perhaps we can jot those down as well, and then perhaps I can go in order and have whoever had the initial thought, we can talk about those items, if that's acceptable to the board, or perhaps a better way I might say, if someone's got a different idea, let us know.
That's a great idea.
Good idea? I'm here seeing nods.
Good idea.
Good idea? Okay, all right. Well, does anyone else have any other thoughts?
Go ahead.
Mr. Krug, and then Mr. Gesund.
The only thought I had is under 1B materials is I had the opportunity in the last few weeks to go over a copy of the Zoning Board of Appeals handbook, and it was excellent. I wish I would have been able to have that when I first became an alternate. So I think it's something that should be handed out along with the other materials.
Immediately when the person is appointed?
Exactly. Because it sure answers a lot of questions.
And that's the, who publishes that?
That's MML.
MML publication.
MML? Okay. All righty. I've got one thought under section four for, I'm sorry, Mr. Gesund, you were next.
Yeah. Under, I'm not sure which section it is, but number 13, Order of Business. Is there any way that we can include possibly within the liaison reports? When we rule on a property, I'm wondering if we could get maybe an update when there's movement on that, when the property's opening, if the property was renegotiated or something?
That would be nice.
So... It doesn't have to be on every piece of property that's being developed in the city. That would be, we'd end up with a phone book.
Yeah.
But just on the stuff that we rule on.
Okay, so an update on the progress or?
Right.
What might have happened or with the cases that we hear?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all righty. Anyone else? And I thought perhaps, and certainly this is no negative comment towards our alternates, but I'm very glad you're here, but we, this board is seven members. We have six here with two alternates, which is great that we can conduct business and have, I think, an excellent discussion, but should we consider perhaps changing at what meeting we do the officer selection and also this process going through the review of the rules? So those are my thoughts, and we can talk about those as we proceed with all the other ones. All right. Well, if there's no other thoughts, I guess we can, my thought is to just go in order. I've been jotting these down, and if you don't mind, we'll go in order, and whoever brought the subject up can talk about it, and we can discuss it. Sound good, everybody?
Yes.
Good.
All righty. All right. So, Mr. Allen, under section two, Membership 1A Training.
Yeah.
You had thoughts about a published report?
Yeah, like twice a year, publish and distribute a report of everyone's training and also of their attendance. That could be one form and cover everything, but it gives all of us a chance to look at, what was my attendance? What classes have I taken? Do I need to take some?
Okay. Any additional, any additional thoughts on that either way, by anybody? It can be a positive thought. I mean, if you agree, feel free to say so.
I agree. I was going to suggest doing that once a year when we, your suggestion's even better. I was going to suggest doing it.
Twice a year.
Once a year, when we go over the rules, to have a report then.
Yeah.
Your idea's, your idea's much better.
Thank you.
And Ms. Ward, you had an agreement, I thought I heard you say?
I support the idea. I think it's a very good idea. Do we need a motion to add this language to item, or section two, item 1A?
We will, and we can either do a separate motion on each line item, which is probably the best thing. We can go through each item to get an idea of where we are sitting in a whole, and then go back either as a whole or perhaps one, whatever way we want to do it.
Ms. Chair?
Yes.
May I suggest directing staff to make those updates and then coming back with a fully amended set of rules and procedures for the body as a whole to vote on?
Perfect.
That would be a great idea, yes.
Okay. I'm seeing nods from, or hearing verbal yeses from everybody here, and I concur. Okay. Any other thoughts on item 1A? I have, I have one thought. Published report, distributed, any idea who we might want that? I would think all the board members and staff.
I would think probably council and this body, for this body.
All right. All right.
Because they're the ones that do the appointments.
Okay. I'm okay with that. Any additional thoughts on that subject matter? Mr. Baumgarten, you've got a clear idea of perhaps what your draft revisions might say?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. All right, item 1B, ZBA Handbook. Mr. Krug, anything to add?
No, I think, I just think a copy of that would be great.
Okay.
Very informative.
I agree.
I think it'd be really helpful just to get somebody like me who doesn't have a ton of experience doing this up to speed, and I think it'd be very helpful.
Great, okay. And to my left?
I would like to see as a new alternate board member that automatically a new member or new alternate gets these four pieces of information. That would be extremely helpful.
Okay, all right. And that's what it says already, if I'm not mistaken.
I never got mine, just FYI.
Oh, okay.
And I've been on the board since January, so.
We'll be rectifying that.
Thank you.
I have, the items are here and available and ready to go, and they just haven't been collected into a binder and given to the new members, and I apologize that staff did not do that for you.
Okay. And I agree with the, everything I've heard tonight about that as well. It's something that the MML has had out for, I think, decades. They regularly update that, especially when there's changes in state law. It's very beneficial, especially with a board that doesn't necessarily meet every month. And, you know, some people can't attend all the trainings that's provided by staff as well, so I...
Okay.
Okay. Let's see, our next one, oh, under duties, section two, item two, A, attendance. Mr. Allen?
Yeah, I would like to see us develop a guideline for percentage of attendance, and this would be the target that we were shooting for, you know? What that number is, off the top of my head, I put 75% attendance. I don't think that's unreasonable.
Not at all.
But, I mean, we have everything from 100% to 43% attendance.
And those numbers are from?
Them keeping track in the front office. Tim's been keeping track of that.
Oh, okay. All right. All right.
I guess the question I'd like to raise is, okay, we keep track. We, as a body, cannot ask a member to leave. It would have to be elevated to the mayor and council, since they are the appointing agent, so to speak. If the person may have illness or family issues that keep them away, I understand your concern about if you're going to serve, that you need to be here. The only concern I have is that in case someone does have a serious illness or a serious family issue that causes them to miss maybe three or four meetings, and then they're sick one night, so now they fall below 75%, what do we do in that case?
I think a just clause, clause could be, could be applied there. I don't want this to seem, you know, barbaric and vindictive.
I don't want to be vindictive, no.
But there have been a number of cases, Paul, I think you can probably remember this, where we've had members who we've asked at the start of the meeting, is so-and-so going to be here tonight? And the answer was, we've never received a call. We don't know.
That has happened, yes.
Yes. And that's a little troublesome from a consistency standpoint.
So, it already states each regular and alternate member has a duty to attend all meetings except for good cause. Would you like a definition of what good, what constitutes good cause, or?
Um...
For instance, I missed a meeting or two because it fell on a religious holiday. I would consider that good cause.
Absolutely. I don't know if we need to get that specific.
Okay.
It just offering, having the expectation of percentage, I think, is important, and it keeps people focused.
And maybe that is the language that is used, that in attendance, the expectation is for each regular and alternative member to attend at least 75% of the meetings.
In a given year.
In a given year.
I could go with that.
Could you live with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other thoughts on that? Well, I've got...
One more thought. If the alternate is attending the meeting but isn't being seated on, seated at the, at the board and is sitting in, is that still considered attendance?
I would think so.
I would think that should count.
Ready to serve.
I think that should count.
I think it should count. I agree. You know, in the instance, especially when a matter is postponed, and perhaps not everybody's seated can attend the next meeting, well, they should be attending the next meeting because they, well, at least the person in the audience heard all the testimony and can sit from a position of knowledge, because they were there at the last meeting and they saw everything going on.
Right.
Well, that happened to me at the February meeting. I was here in January. I sat in the audience. I listened. And then the February meeting, we had a couple of no-shows, and both Joe and I were asked to join the dais and to render a decision on Green Lantern. So, yeah, I think it should count if you're here in the audience.
So would the alternates be considered part of the roll call when we do the roll call at the beginning of the meeting in order to be officially acknowledged that they're here?
Probably a good idea.
Well, the minutes should read, there's a section for also an attendance.
Yeah.
It should be read there and notified that way.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Would it be useful to you if there was a provision added to the rules of procedure that said that if somebody has advanced knowledge of not being able to attend, that they were to alert the chair within 24 hours of the meeting, or?
Yeah, I think they should alert staff as well.
Okay.
Actually, particularly just as important or more important, in my opinion, is the chair, that staff needs to know to properly reach out to alternates and get that done quickly, as well as, you know, the meeting setup, and be able to announce if we even have a late call-in, just with the statuses of that member.
I would also like to add to that with the published report in December and June of each year, it can, both of those items can be one report, but again, if you're tracking something, it'd be nice to know where you stand.
Well, let's see, we talked about a percentage, and while I think setting a percentage is good, I think we're all expected when we sign up for this to be here 100% of the time.
Yes.
And I think if we publish something that says you're really only expected to be here 75% of the time.
Yeah.
I sense it's giving mixed messages.
Right.
I also have a thought that ultimately it is council that appoints.
You're right.
And it's my opinion, Mr. Baumgarten, if I'm not mistaken, I believe any member of council at any time, can they ask staff for an attendance report? Can that be done?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, you know, if it's a time where reappointments are coming up, or whatever it might be, if council members individually or as a whole has reason to know who's attending and who's not attending, I believe ultimately, in the case where people are attending, that can reflect it. If someone's not attending, that's going to be up to council. That's my thought.
Uh-huh.
And then, oh, go ahead.
Perhaps then it should read that regular and alternate members are expected to attend 100% of all meetings. However, for good cause, at least 75% of the meetings. And since this board does not meet every month, it's, it meets based upon a case or variance request. We could go two or three months, which we have, and not meet. So I think we have to look at an expectation of a minimum as well as 100% of the time.
I guess the only thought I have is just looking at this good cause. Benefit I see to defining good cause is, is that if we do have a member who is unable to attend, and we're going to be keeping track of whether or not they're there, maybe they could then point to the good cause for not showing up, and then whether or not they actually have that good cause. I think that could be helpful to, especially if we're going to set a minimum percentage, if we're going to keep track of why they weren't there, so they could actually show cause, is I guess what I'm trying to say.
Who's going to determine if it's good cause or not? Keep track of it, and then?
Yeah, that's, that's a little difficult.
Yeah.
It also borders on invasion of privacy, because there could be some situations where someone might not want to discuss.
That, you know, I think you raise a very good point. There could be some very intimate, personal issues that...
Right.
Or whatever it might be.
Mm-hmm.
I know I've missed an important training that I wanted to go to, and I think I actually had at my job, another board meeting to staff, so I couldn't make it.
Mm-hmm.
Yet it looks like, you know, well, so, is that good cause? I don't know, work called, is it?
Yeah.
You know?
That's what pays the bills.
Yeah, exactly. Well, I don't think that as a body, we are able to define good cause, but I think we need to show an expectation that a minimum number of meetings need to be attended, as opposed to just saying, we expect you to be here 100% of the time. Well, I didn't go to work today. I had the flu. I don't feel like getting out of bed to come to a meeting tonight. I'm just going to stay home. Is that good cause? I don't feel well. I took a sick day from work. I'm requesting a sick day from the Zoning Board of Appeals. I think there has to be some latitude here on attendance.
How about if we just, under attendance, it says each regular and alternate member has a duty to attend all meetings, period? Forget about the good cause. Forget about any of the other language. That's pretty clear.
Okay.
Yeah, I would agree.
I would agree with that. Okay. Okay. Any other thoughts on that item? Okay, excellent. Mr. Baumgarten, you, I just want to make sure you don't have any questions about that item before I move on to the next one.
What I have is, to bring back to the board, is section 2A, to read attendance. Each regular and alternate member has a duty to attend all meetings, period.
Period.
The addition of a call-ahead provision as well for those indicating the members that if they're unable to attend, they need to notify staff and chair ahead of time.
And I like 24 hours. That's a common courtesy.
I like more.
Yeah.
And if I'm an alternate, more.
Yeah.
Because as soon as you get a call, I believe you two got a call how long ago?
Not long.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. You okay with that?
I can live with that, yeah.
All right. All right, sounds like we're comfortable with that. How about if we move on to the next item? Let's see, item three, other meetings.
Actually, there needs to be this in both the regular meeting and other meetings, but it's how we deal with if the chair and the vice chair are both absent from a meeting. How do we determine who runs the meeting?
Would it be the longest-serving member of the board who is not an officer?
Yeah. Do you think so?
Yeah.
That's what I was thinking, and I know in other cities, such as the one I work for, City of Troy, we had the same question come up, and that's exactly what we decided to do.
I think that's fair.
Yeah. And it's easy for staff to figure out who should be seated.
Yeah.
Well, I think we could, yeah, the staff maintains a list of appointments and when they were originally appointed.
Yep, that works. We just need to work it into two and three.
Regular meetings and other meetings, got it.
Yep.
Okay. I think we're all on the same page. I'm seeing nods and hearing guesses.
Yep.
Okay. Mr. Baumgarten, clear on your directive regarding those?
Yes, sir.
Excellent. And, see, Mr. Gesund, Order of Business, Liaison Reports. Update on progress of cases, if you have anything to add.
That's pretty, that's pretty much it, just want to know where we're at.
Yeah, I like that idea. I think it's good.
I do, too.
It is good.
And if it's okay with the board, I don't normally do this, but our liaison's here. Should we ask our liaison perhaps if they would like some direction? I mean, what cases do we, do we want to hear about? How far back do we want to go? If a case that we decided two years ago suddenly comes to light, but it's questionless, so how, I guess, those are just some questions I would think if I were the liaison, what are your, what's your framework? You know? So I could either ask the board to discuss or enumerate, the board members to enumerate upon potential framework, or if it's okay with the board, perhaps ask our liaison just to comment some insight as well.
Please do.
Yes, please do.
Liaison?
Okay. Okay. Mr. Hennan, thank you for coming.
Yes. Well, I think generally staff is going to be the person that needs to report on this because much of the information about those sorts of cases, I'm going to be getting from staff myself, so rather than a game of telephone, you know, just have staff report it directly.
Okay, so if we want to amend that so that there's, so that there's, like, in between other business and liaison, maybe a staff report updating on?
Perhaps a ma- Perhaps the major projects.
Updating, just, just projects that, that we've ruled on.
Yes.
Especially ones that have been denied.
Yeah.
Can we roll that, the updates into other business, that it would include administration, which is staff or ZBA members may discuss previous or upcoming items? Or interpretations concerning unrelated items on the agenda?
Yeah, that would, that would work.
Yeah.
Staff report will not be an independent bullet point?
Or do we want to make it a...
This item will be incorporated into other business?
It's, it's actually interesting that we have staff comments in our minutes, yet the order of business does not bullet point staff comments, but I guess, new business, other business, I guess it would fall under other business.
Yeah.
Perhaps Mr. Baumgartner would like to elaborate? Would you like to be a bullet point?
I would be quite honored to be a bullet point.
All right, what do we want that in? After other business?
Yeah, other business and then have staff reports before the liaison reports.
Okay. And the staff report should attempt to include previous, previous, updates on previous cases that, and that can include planning commission action.
Yes.
Perhaps if there were any legal action that was suitable for bringing to the board's attention. And I, I think that's good. I mean, as board members, I know I've gone to just social events and people will say, hey, one of the first things they say after they meet me is, "What's going on with this?" or "What's going on with that?" And I, you know, it's my rule here, I don't know what's going on with Green Lantern.
Yes.
But I get the questions all the time.
Oh, yeah.
So that would be, that would be very helpful, very helpful, and also gives us an opportunity, depending on the breadth of information that staff gives to us, to say, staff knows a lot more about this than my brief elevator speech, definitely give so-and-so a call.
Yep. Good idea.
Okay. Well, Mr. Baumgartner, are you clear for that part?
Yes, sir.
All right. Oh, and then the final thing was for officers, section four, selection of officers, and I guess this might apply to also the annual review of rules.
Yep.
Did we want to have any discussion regarding the meeting date that's picked? And I only bring that up just because there's three regular members that are, no, three or four regular members. How many members are not here?
Three of the regular meetings are not present tonight.
Three of the regular members aren't here, so, and I just had that thought as I sat down tonight, so.
I think it was probably done as in July because that was the beginning of the fiscal year.
Yeah.
That everything runs concurrently with the fiscal year.
And it's also likely to be the first meeting after the new round of appointments are made by city council.
Ah, got it. That's right.
Because I was going to recommend January, at the January meeting, that election of officers and also update on rules and regulations, but since appointments happen in the end of June or the first of July, then perhaps we leave it as it is.
And I've got a thought that you're thought, I've been thinking about.
Okay.
If I'm a brand-new member and one of the first things I'm being asked to do, perhaps never sitting in any of these meetings, I'm being asked to vote on an officer, perhaps someone who I've never met in my life. I might have seen them conduct their duties if I attended a meeting or watched the video. I've never had an opportunity to perhaps, I think it's one thing to read the rules of procedure, it's another thing to participate, or at least watch from the audience and participate in how that works. And piggybacking on what Ms. Ward thinks, I think if, if there's an opportunity for people to have several meetings under their belt before they're asked to, an officer or perhaps amendments to this, I'm leaning towards thinking January actually might be, for that purpose, more reasonable.
December or January, that would be fine and give people a couple of months to get to know one another.
I think that's a really good idea, just as me coming in today, I think it's hard for me to elect a chair and a vice chair. I think it'd be a lot better for me to be here for six months before doing that, so I think that's a really good idea.
Yeah, I do go for that.
I, I know that the city of Southfield does their selection of board officers in January, so.
Okay. I guess regarding holidays, that's typically the, the conflict with perhaps our December and January months. Is there any preference? I'm hearing January, I guess I would...
I'd rather see January than December.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, December's too crammed full of stuff.
Yes, I agree.
All right. And then it goes on to say, "The officers shall be elected no later than a September meeting." Do we...
March, move that to March.
Yeah, they both say March, okay. The same three months, just, or two months.
You know, right now, we can put it off from July through September. I like the fact that we don't have anything sitting on our table tonight.
Before.
That we can just get together and work out how we do our business. And I'd like to see the, the delay removed from there. You know, that if there's no July meeting, then officers shall be elected no later than a September meeting. That's, I don't know, it's a little loosey-goosey.
I agree.
I was actually thinking the same thing.
Oh, good.
Why, why delay it? Hey, these, this is when it happens. As a member, you, unless of course there's an anticipated vacancy, presuming any new members or new alternates are appointed in their first meetings in July, they should have a reasonable amount of time to get familiar with this as well as know, January, these are the things that occur. So I concur, I think we should scratch the no later than the...
September.
The provision, whatever, the other, I mean, you know, ultimately, if for whatever reason we can't get a quorum, I think we're all aware that we better do this right away. And there's just nothing we can do. There could be power outages, there could be snowstorms, there could be, who knows?
Right.
Deluge, floods.
Yes.
Don't even talk about it.
Don't talk about it.
August is not a real popular month in this city.
So the, the selection would read annually, "At the January meeting, the ZBA shall select by majority vote from its membership a chair and a vice chair."
Chair.
Officers shall be eligible for reelection.
Election, period.
Done.
Yes.
So for section four, we want to do that with officers, and do we also want to do that for the, well, under section seven, annual review, the rules of procedure shall be reviewed annually at the July meeting? We just want to strike that and say January meeting?
January, and then, period.
Okay, yeah. Good?
Absolutely.
Everybody nodding?
Yep.
Any, any different thoughts?
So if we pass this, let's say in August, then January of 2020, we would...
Have election of officers.
Another election of officers.
Yep.
For...
Yeah.
And updating the rules and procedures.
Right.
Okay.
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 Fair enough. Mr. Baumgartner, clear on...
I just want to make sure that we're clear. So the January meeting will happen annually despite agenda or anything? It just, it just will happen?
I, I think we need to come together as a board in January to start the year off right, because usually we will have cases that will become, that will come before us. So I think it's important that we do meet in January.
Confirmed.
Okay.
That's a pleasure.
I only live down the street. I can walk.
Mr. Chair, the, I guess we don't have to make a motion on this, that they can, staff can bring this back to us before we do?
Yeah, I think Mr. Baumgartner is going to come back with a draft that attempts to hit all these.
Points we've raised.
Yeah, hit these points and then we'll have something to, yeah. And on a related matter, I'm thinking like if the first Monday in January is January 1st or 2nd...
Go to the following.
I can't recall. Do we have the ability to adjust our meeting dates if we, if we see fit or perhaps, just, you know...
It can be called as a special.
Meetings.
Yeah.
I, I think we, we have adjusted the calendar for certain stuff like elections and other, yeah, other things that if it conflicts with another board, so I think that's, that shouldn't be a problem.
And, Mr. Chair, annually, we'll come with you for the, with a list of provision or possible dates for the upcoming calendar year for the, for the body to vote on.
Okay.
And so we do our best to make sure that we don't hit any potential conflict with holidays.
Gotcha, and I'm, I'm looking at the calendar now just to see here, for example, in January, yeah, so we're into the, the 6th is, is not the first week. Yeah, and I think that's a great idea to let, let everybody know, or the board know, here's the proposed dates. Of course, and you'll flag anything that perhaps falls on a, a date that holidays or something that we anticipate could be difficult for not only members of the board, perhaps even the general public.
Sure.
I like that idea.
Good idea.
Do we want to put that in the rules of procedure? Just, I know we were potentially getting new staff to be our liaison. Do we want to say in January, staff should provide...
A list of possible meeting dates for the year.
Well, I believe we come to, with the, I believe we come to you with those in either November or December for the board to adopt for the upcoming year. Under section, section three, subsection 2A or 2B, we do say when the regular meeting day falls upon or near a legal holiday, the ZBA shall select a suitable alternate date in the same month if possible in accordance with the Open Meetings Act. Again, like I said, we try to head those off and suggest alternative dates for you when you adopt the upcoming, the calendar for the upcoming year.
Okay.
And it, it does say that we as a body can select a different date than the second Monday of the month.
Yep. Okay. Okay, well, I guess, does anyone, that allays my concerns. Does anyone else on the board have any concerns about?
Nope, I think...
We've talked about so far.
I think that covers it.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it does.
And I believe those are all the proposed changes, and I think we've all agreed that Mr. Baumgartner will come back with a, a draft that we can, we'll have more specific information based on our thoughts tonight.
Maybe with the proposed additions to our rules of procedure, that the additions are done either in red or in bold so that we can identify them.
Yes, ma'am.
That would be very helpful. Thank you.
Perfect. Anything else on this, this matter from any of the board members? Okay, well, move on to the second item, elections, matter of electing a chair and vice chair to the zoning board of appeals. Right now, I'm your chair and Suma Kalpine is our vice chair.
Mr. Chair, in, in light of the three regular members who aren't here, would it be possible to postpone this till next month?
Let's see what the...
But we don't...
Nothing against the alternates here, but...
Nope. I understand.
But we may not have an August meeting. It's dependent upon whether or not there is a variance request.
Through the chair.
Yes.
I would, I would intend to bring the copy of the provisions back to this body during an August meeting, so it can be acted upon while memories are fresh.
I, I agree. I think even if there are no cases, we should, we should meet. As a matter of fact, I think Mr. Allen had an excellent point that it's actually can be beneficial.
Right.
Allow us to focus knowing that this is our sole item. We're fresh, it's not even eight o'clock yet, so.
I like it.
Okay.
We can, I'd like to make a motion to...
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Make, make an official motion to postpone the election of officers until the August meeting.
Okay, so that's a motion by Mr. Gesund. Do we have a second? Second, Mr. Allen. Do we have any, any discussion? And just while we're on the subject, I know as chair, I believe it was in the last few months, I was asked to sit on a committee to analyze contractor bids to update the city's master plan. And that committee consisted of the zoning board chair, the planning commission chair, the mayor, our council liaison, and the city manager and the community development director. We, we had, we had, we had one meeting where four of us were there and we reviewed the...
Process.
Yeah, we reviewed the, the seven, I believe it was seven proposals. That duty appears like it may or could morph into possibly being on a standing committee to guide the master plan or a steering committee to guide that process through its multi-month. Sometimes these can take 18 months to do. So certainly that's something that the chair position was asked to do, but I think it's important that all members considering a potential position, or even members who aren't, but you know, that is, at least was one of the, the duties that chair was asked to do. And with that, Mr. Baumgartner, is there anything different than what I've said? Do we have an idea of where that might be going or...
You're correct. We did sort of put a pin in that item, anticipating an incoming community development director starting on the 22nd. That individual will come in with a planning background, will be another set of bias to review this item. We weren't able to proceed forward in the time that Mr. McLean was still with the city and that the subcommittee does have at least two vendors that they wish to interview, but haven't had the opportunity yet to schedule those interviews. Those will likely happen after the 22nd, but hopefully before, long before the August 6th, the August 12th meeting, so that we can bring those recommendations to city council. And the only one note, only thing I would note is that it, while that person was the same at the time, it's the planning commission liaison specifically that was asked to sit on that steering committee. I know Ross had double duties at, at the time.
Oh, planning commission liaison, okay.
Yeah, not necessarily this, the, it wasn't because Ross was a ZBA liaison, it was specifically because he was the planning liaison that he was asked to sit on that body.
All right. All right. Okay. Any additional comments regarding our, our motion and second?
I, I know that I will not be here on the 12th. A family vacation has been planned and paid for, and so I will not be able to make the 12th meeting. So I, I would prefer that we do it tonight and proceed and not have to revisit the issue on the 12th.
Any other thoughts on the, on the motion? I think we have six members. I, I think it's fair to proceed. That's just my thought. Any other thoughts?
I'll call the question.
Okay. So this is a motion to postpone item two, elections, until next month? Mr. Baumgartner?
Motion to postpone? Gesund?
Yes.
Ward?
No.
Henshaw?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Krug?
Yes.
Didn't get everybody here in my notes. Yes, and Evans?
No.
Okay. Motion passed on a four to two vote.
Okay, well, expect that to be on the next item, next agenda? Okay, well, expect that to be on the next item, uh, next agenda? Excellent. Is there any other business?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Most of you will remember the case that was brought before us on April 9th, 2018. It was for what is now chemistry salons. There was a lot of discussion regarding the parking situation there. And this body asked a lot of questions. The applicant knew that she was not within 500 feet of public parking. She also knew and admitted to this that you could not have shared parking across 12 Mile Road. And based on all of that information coming together, this body chose to deny her application for, I believe it was eight chairs she was asking for, if I remember correctly. Well, it's been pointed out to me that the business actually opened with a parking agreement. I haven't seen a copy of it. I'm not saying it doesn't exist, with the Methodist Church across 12 Mile Road. And it opened with seven chairs.
If I could point of order, I'm not, I'm not sure how this, this is germane to...
Well...
The board in its official capacity is deciding on variances.
We decided to deny the increase in the amount of chairs.
Right.
Yet, and it was four, was what she was slated for. They opened with seven. There's, I don't know how this happens, but it appears that this body was usurped by someone or someones. And it's a little bothersome to me. More than a little bothersome. And I think it's germane to the business that we do if someone takes it upon themselves to override the decisions of this body.
Well, I think that's, uh, and I do appreciate your comments. Certainly, um, if someone is denied a variance, I think our minutes were very clear with the actions that we took.
Yes.
This is where we drew the line. And we followed a democratic process in the open, in the public. And the public, uh, has the right, or I shouldn't say has the right, there is an expectation set. I do believe that it's incumbent upon staff that if things, after our decision, were done perhaps in conflict, uh, something, you know, that's something for staff that if enforcement is needed, or they need to revisit the issue administratively, I think that should be done. I know there's been times in my career where we've made a mistake, but if it was, if we made a mistake, we have the right to go back and say, hey, we made a mistake. I'm not suggesting a mistake was made here. I, I don't know.
Yes.
But, you know, if a mistake was made, um, or whatever it might be. With that said, Mr. Baumgartner, I, did you have anything to add to this?
Yes, sir, I can't, I can't actually confirm that a mistake was made. Former community development director looked, saw a, an existing shared use agreement between a restaurant and a business across 12 Mile, and assumed that to be precedent-setting. And then indicated to the business owner that they would be able to enter into agreement across 12 Mile. That should not have happened, that, that agreement was not precedential. It actually preceded the update in the ordinance that barred that from happening and shouldn't even have been part of the calculation. It is completely unrelated in every way. But still, unfortunately, it did indicate to the business owner that that would be allowed, that we did go back after and let them know that they cannot use all those stations that they've opened with, that they would be confined to a lesser number, commensurate with the number of spaces that they have. That is where this stands now, that they still cannot, to this day, still cannot use all that. My office, in accordance with our, um, with, you know, sort of in the spirit of economic development, has been trying to aid the business owner in coming to a legal agreement with one of their neighbors. That process is ongoing. So at this time, again, the enforcement action is that the property, the business owner cannot utilize more than, I believe, five chairs, based on the, what the site plan that was brought in and, um, bike, bike rack credits that they get for parking spaces. So we, we did end up having to first tell them, first told them no, then told them yes, and then have to come back and tell no. So, um, not a bright spot for administration. But again, did have to, as the chair said, admit our wrongdoing and go in and, and correct that to make sure that they understood the appropriate application of the ordinance.
Okay.
Thank you for clearing that up. It was, a, a point of bother with me. I'd never seen it happen before. And, uh, it was just a little bothersome.
Sure, well, it makes sense.
Yes.
And certainly, as, I, I think we would all agree that if we say yes or no to something and the opposite occurs, it's definitely going to raise a question...
Yes.
For every board member, as well as this board as a whole. Thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
Any additional items under other business?
Just like to invite everybody to, uh, go to the Street Art Fair on Saturday. I think that's from 11 to 3, if I'm not mistaken. On Goulge. And it's, I've been the last couple of years, and it's a great event.
Thank you. All right, with that, other businesses, staff has anything to add?
Uh, just building upon my previous comments, we will be welcoming a new community development director in on the 22nd. Look forward to this being, um, this, I think it's liaison, returning back to that position. And so you, this will hopefully be the one and only time you guys have to contend with, with me trying to keep up, um, Ms. Schluto. And I, I really hope I'm saying, I do need to practice her name a couple of times, but, uh, she's joining us. She's a career planner. She's, uh, leaving a planning firm to come join the city. We're excited about it. She lives in, in adjoining communities, so she's close to home. This is, Berkeley is, uh, you know, sort of her hometown as well, which we're happy about. I think she's going to be fantastic, and I look forward to having her on the team.
And, and, what, what's her name?
Erin, Erin Schluto.
Okay.
S-C-H-L-U-T-O-W.
Got you. Okay. Well, great. Great, well, we are happy to have you here, but we understand that you've got, uh, many hats to wear. And pleased that, uh, the, the search didn't take too long.
Yes, no, it was good.
Great. All righty. With that being said, uh, Councilman Henan, our liaison report. Thanks for coming.
Yeah, so, welcome back to all our reappointees and our new member, Michael Hanschel. And, uh, just wanted to remind you, if you haven't already taken your oath of office to drop in and see the clerk, to get that taken care of. Also wanted to remind that there is mon, budget, the money, money in the budget for training, you know. So I'll continue to share training opportunities as I come across them. But if, if you run across anything that you're interested in, um, let the city know. And if, if we have it in the budget, we'll, you know, see if we can pay your way for that opportunity. And as mentioned before, we're, you know, the city's master plan is starting to kick off. And I hope you all will be involved in that too, because where, from where you sit, you hold some valuable insights. So would definitely want your input into our master plan. And then just finally, I'm glad to be here and look forward to working with all of you.
Excellent. Thank you. And, uh, if it's okay with, uh, Councilman Henan, I did think of something that I didn't think of that relates to training. That, may I piggyback on what you said? I know, um, our, uh, rules of procedure under membership training materials, it does say, uh, one of the four items is any other materials deemed, this is what the new members should get, any other materials deemed necessary by the community development director and approved by the chair of the ZBA to familiarize the new member with the appeals process and the duties. So I'm, I'm happy to consider...
That's great.
Any items, whether I hear about from the liaison, it could be from the community develop... Well, it sounds like it should go through the community development director. But one example, Joe, and I heard about your suggestion with the MML. I, I mean, if somebody would have come to me and said, hey, is this, I would say, oh, yes. I mean, I think it's good that we have it in here. But even if it, it never made it in, for whatever reason, I think that's a very good source of information, very comprehensive. So I'm on board with all that. Thank you, Councilmember Henan. Okay. At this point, this is the time of our meeting for public comments. Are there any members in the audi, uh, here tonight who'd like to comment on any item? This is your time to speak, if there is. I'll, I'll ask a third time. Our sole member is, is shaking, okay? All right. Well, with that, I'll close the public comment session, and I'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you for all attending.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.